All right, everyone. The time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this session of the Bridgewater Town Council to order. Can we please stand and join me in a Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Full house tonight. Good to see everybody. I'll start off by saying, for those who cannot be here, if you'd like to watch this town council meeting, it is being streamed live on YouTube, please go to the Town of Bridgewater Facebook page for the link. I do need to open the meeting tonight with a couple condolences for some veterans that we lost. The first is David Munstis. Served in the U.S. Army during Iraqi Freedom. He passed away on February 21st. And David Thrasher, Sr. They can't hear. Oh, I'm sorry. Hello? Can you hear me now? Okay. All right. And David Thrasher, Sr., who served in the U.S. Marines, passed away on March 8th. Can we still, can we have a moment of silence for those service members and their families? Thank you very much. All right. So approval of minutes from our previous meeting on March 4th, 2025. Do I have a motion for approval?
Excuse me. Mr. President, I would like to propose an amendment to these minutes.
Okay. Well, let's get a motion and then a second for the amendment. So I have a motion, Mr. Chase, second, Ms. Strigles. And what is your amendment?
Well, some of it has to do with my own personal voting record. For example, on the PFAS remediation, I voted yes, not no. On the Bridgewater welcoming community to be tabled, I voted yes to table, not no. On the vote to adjourn, I voted yes, not no. So I would like these corrected in the record. And then the last thing is, the water discussion was a little bit too skimpy. And I looked at the tape, and I have the exact quotes from the people. Counselor Murphy asked, "What are your thoughts on the Perkins development and how will it impact our water?" The DPW personnel Jonas stated, and I quote, "Perkins development? Multi-use thing? I can't support that at this time. I'm telling you the truth. Right now, we are struggling to maintain what we've got now. In the winter months, we should be topping off those tanks and resting the wells. Wells are running. Tanks are a little over half. That's just the facts." Unquote. So I would like to be able to submit these items for amendment.
Okay, that's fine. So that's a motion to make those amendments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Loretty. Okay. Mr. Loretty. All those in favor of the amendments mentioned, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I also, my vote on the PFAS was recorded wrong as well. I voted yes.
Okay.
So I don't have it in writing, but I will send an email or something.
That's fine. Hopefully, make that change in the record, that he voted yes. And then, based on those amendments, let's see. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. I do not have any announcements from the president this evening, but we do have a proclamation that I would like to read into the record. You know, try and do this loudly so everyone can hear. Proclamation, Bridgewater Purple Heart Month proclamation. Whereas the Town of Bridgewater is officially recognized as a Purple Heart Town by the National Organization, the Military Order of the Purple Heart, and whereas the Town Council, the Town of Bridgewater, adopted Resolution R-24-2014-001, a resolution designating Bridgewater as a Purple Heart Town, and whereas the people of the Town of Bridgewater have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community and the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from Bridgewater who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas our community has a proud tradition of military service, and many of our citizens have earned the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with an enemy force construed as a singularly meritorious act of essential service. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Bridgewater Town Council, should hereby proclaim the month of May, 2025, as Purple Heart Month in honor of the brave men and women who selflessly and courageously fought the enemies of our country in foreign lands and who were wounded or killed in armed conflicts, and bear the honor of the Purple Heart. We hereby stand united to show our unwavering respect, support, and gratitude to these veterans, both past and present, as it is their sacrifices that afford us all the liberties and inalienable rights guaranteed by our Constitution. In witness hereon, we have hereon to set our hand and cause the seal of the Town of Bridgewater to be affixed this 18th day of March, 2025. Is the veteran's agent here to receive this, or anybody representing the veterans tonight?
Great.
All right. So again, this is signed by all the town council members, and again, well deserved. So, drink it, a little dry. So next up, we have Citizens Open Forum. So again, due to Massachusetts' open meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. And again, based on the crowd size, as I mentioned in our last meeting, I'll try to limit this to, you know, three minutes at the max as possible. If you're talking about similar items, I would encourage you to come up with just different facts and new information that the council can use. And with that, again, mention your name and address for the record. So please come on up, speak, whoever would like to come up, name and address, and let us know what you'd like to talk to us about.
Thank you, Mr. President. John Donah, 261 South Street. I'd just like to take a moment to thank Councilman Loretty and Councilman Lindy. This last week, they did host an open forum right here in this chamber. I think, believe they were here for almost two hours, maybe more. I wasn't here that long, but I know they were here quite a bit of time, and it was basically open to any residents of Bridgewater that wanted to voice, you know, their concerns or talk about issues with the town. And if my fellow residents are out there listening, I would encourage you to attend these sessions the next time they're offered. It's, again, it's plenty of time to talk about the town issues, and you can go more than three minutes. So definitely take advantage of that, please. Thank you, Councilmen. I also would like to speak about our last meeting. I did get up in the open forum at the beginning and speak on the welcoming resolution. I voiced my concerns with including the immigration status piece in that resolution, and during that meeting, I did express my concerns as to why it would not be good to include that. But what I would like to talk about tonight real quick is after the open forum was over, an individual that spoke in favor of the resolution came up to me and made a disparaging remark. One could almost interpret it as inferring that I'm a criminal. And, Mr. President, I don't have a criminal record, and like you, Mr. President, I volunteered hundreds of hours of time in youth sports in this community and in other areas of town. And I've been attending meetings for a while now, and I've never interrupted anyone when they were speaking. I've never made any negative comments to anybody at around open forums or any time during the meetings. I have too much respect for this chamber. But the fact that someone who supports that resolution would come up and say that to me concerns me that there might be more of an element out there that has the same element of acting. And I hope you consider that when this resolution comes up for a vote again. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Elizabeth Sharp, 1000 South Street. First, I'd like to say that I'm hopeful to hear tonight that the council saw the same ambitious and hard-working qualities in Mr. Casanova Davis that were evident to me while watching the interviews, and that he will be appointed tonight. But even with my confidence in Mr. Davis's finance background, he'll not be able to magically fix our school budget problem. This is why tonight I want to talk about a very crucial data point for our school district, to hopefully help people understand that our school system is not drowning because of mismanagement of money. I hear a lot of people in town wondering how we got into this mess with our schools and how we don't have what other districts around us have as far as lower-class sizes, arts, et cetera. Then I hear people conjecturing a lot, "Well, they must just be mismanaging the money. They're using it on the wrong things." I hope to try to make things a little clearer tonight by talking about our per-people expenditure number. Per-people expenditure is a term that's been shared a lot lately because it's so important, but I know most citizens are busy being experts in their own line of work and running their own households, and they may not fully understand what it means. The Mass Department of Education determines every district's per-people expenditure in order to compare districts' budgets on a level playing field. Obviously, a district like BR is much bigger than East Bridgewater, so you can't compare our budgets and learn anything, as we have so many more students, so of course, our budget is bigger. So what the state does is they determine your per-people expenditure by taking a district's overall budget and dividing it by how many students are in your district, making it easy to compare which districts are spending a lot and which districts are not. BR's per-people expenditure is $16,122. Now let's talk about how that compares to other towns. The Department of Ed lists all of the state's districts in order by their per-people expenditure. When you take out charter and vocational schools, as they're run a bit differently, that leaves you with 288 regular districts in Massachusetts. BR is number 281 on the list of per-people expenditure. That's 281 out of 288 school districts. That means only seven districts out of nearly 300 are spending less than us, and 280 districts are starting with a budget that's bigger than ours. The clear fact is that our budget is starting much smaller than almost every other district in Massachusetts. I try to help myself understand these facts by thinking of it like building a house. If I were to build a house and give my builder $500,000 to do it, and my neighbor on the lot next to me were to give their builder $800,000 to build the same house, then we went to tour houses when they were done, I would notice many differences. And I might say, "Hey, they got an extra bedroom. They got an extra half bath. They have a finished basement, and they got the really nice quartz that I wanted." I would not go turn to my builder and say, "You misused my money. You mismanaged it. I gave you the money, and you used it on the wrong things, because her house has so much more and is so much better than mine." Of course, I wouldn't say that, because everyone can understand that a bigger budget is going to produce a better house. I hope this helps people understand why our schools are in this problem, and that if you hear people just saying, "Ah, it's just mismanagement. They don't need anything else," then it can help you really understand what's going on here. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
My name is Patrick Chisholm. I'm not a Bridgewater resident, but I am an attendee of Bridgewater-Rainham.
Just one moment. We just have to suspend the rules so you can speak.
Mr. President, I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Do I have a second? Ms. Strigles. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. Patrick Chisholm, 86 Carroll Drive, Rainham. I'm here tonight to advocate for the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District. For much of my life, I've been privileged enough to be proud of the school district where I've attended. I'm a lifelong Rainham resident. For the past 13 years, I've had the pleasure of being a student under some of the finest educators that I know, and ones whose impact on my life cannot be understated. It's because of the quality educators in this district, like Masters Kristen Miles, Lee Bajaka, Lindsay Calleher, and Kristin McCord, to name a few, that next year upon my matriculation, I plan to study secondary education in hopes of one day improving adolescent lives as my teachers have improved mine. Furthermore, the extracurriculars at BR have vastly improved my high school experience. The community and the camaraderie I found in Rainwater Players, Culture Club, Math Team, and BR's other extracurricular offerings have allowed me to build vital leadership skills and forge lifetime connections. I really do love my school district, and that's why it's disheartening to hear that Bridgewater isn't currently supporting a budget that will allow its students to flourish as I have. The proposed 2026 fiscal year's budget places the district below level funding, which will lead to widespread cuts and devastating impacts. For example, if approved valuable teachers will be forced to carry class sizes of up to 37 students, diminishing the potential for one-on-one instruction and therefore the quality of their students' education. Moreover, under the approved budget, extracurricular activities and athletics would be heavily scaled back or become entirely self-funded. And I won't mince my words about this issue. Sports and extracurriculars are necessities, not frivolities. They vastly improve the lives of students and allow them to develop skills that they will carry throughout their adulthood, and now they are a crucial part of college applications in a world with increasingly competitive access to higher education. And not only should these opportunities be available for students, they should be free. Keeping sports and activities behind a paywall means that lower-income students will be barred from accessing these enriching resources. I should be across town at rehearsal right now, but I can no longer sit idly and watch as the livelihoods and educations of my classmates, my friends, and the people of my community are destroyed before my eyes. We need an override, folks. In order to prevent these devastating changes from impacting our community, a bi-phase override process must occur. And counselors, that's why I urge you to support an override that lowers class sizes, maintains existing programs, and allows Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District not only to survive but to thrive. Please, everyone in this room, talk to your neighbors, raise awareness any way you can, educate yourself as best you can, reach out to town councilors and any candidates to ensure they'll support this vital override that will ensure the long-term success of our schools. The impacts of your actions will ripple through generations of children in our community. Do something. And remember, the enemy of progress is passivity. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Come on up.
Kimberly Burke, 14 Heather Lane, Bridgewater. Town council members, I'm here tonight because Bridgewater has problems. Problems that are deep, divisive, and distractions from the very work needed for the town to thrive. Yes, the roads are atrocious, and many need immediate attention. The DPW presentation of March 3rd was helpful, but did not include any details regarding RFPs for work that is expected to begin in the spring and summer. As South Street would need repaving during the summer months, this lack of specifics is concerning. Yes, the water quality is a health concern for all, which the DPW did not provide specifics of when the most needed projects would begin and how the current PFAS levels can be addressed pending a resolution. But more importantly, yet again, there's another problem. A poison, another blight, that some citizens of Bridgewater have tried to avoid. A radical, far-right political movement that is seeking to remake the town in their small-minded image of who Bridgewater is, what we stand for, and how we coexist. Emboldened with a false understanding of the 2024 presidential election, members of our community, all adults, have commenced with online insults, disinformation, and a plan to, quote, "flood the zone" to bog down the political process of the council, the school committee, and other town boards to delay progress needed to ensure that all citizens feel safe and welcome in their community. The recent arrest of a town resident for placing Nazi images across the town and making public Nazi salutes only highlights that the decision to table the welcoming resolution, RFY25007, was short-sighted. While it may have been politically expedient to delay voting on the welcoming resolution, the effect of this decision was to give a license to those who thrive on hate. It is at times of unrest and conflict that we need elected officials to act, now, not later. I ask you to reconsider that decision to table the resolution and vote unanimously to designate the Town of Bridgewater as one that welcomes all and respects all. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's my student. That's my student who was not in an oversized classroom. That's my student who I worked tirelessly with on writing skills. If I have 175 kids next year, I won't be able to do that. You won't have that product coming out of Bridgewater-Rainham, who wants to be, mind you, a future educator. Who wants to be someone who comes back and feeds our community. That's what we should be supporting here today. That's what we should be considering. And I know the council can't officially call for an override until the school committee comes to the table. Well, I'll tell you, I sat there the other night, and I was disappointed with what my school committee was bringing to the table. Just open the doors, begging you for free cash when our own community is struggling? Who are you going to cut from? And if you give free cash, and the Town of Rainham gives free cash to cover this "just open the door" scenario, I will hear it on the town center. People will say, "See? They had the money. It'll be there next year when you ask for an override. Don't bother. They'll have the money." People don't understand free cash is a one-time thing, not to supplement the needs of all the students. We are running out of time. So I urge you, as soon as this school district gives you something, to please take action on it. I know you can do that. I know we, as citizens, have the right to a petition, but we are actually considering just looking to you to lead us in the right direction and protect kids like that. 37 kids in elementary classes in Bridgewater-Rainham is appalling. Absolutely mind-boggling that if we can't meet the $6.4 million budget fall for the level "open the door" funding, that's what we'll be doing to our kids, and we cannot do that. Towns around here are voting tomorrow. Easton is going to discuss if they're going to have an override soon. We can do this. Trust your citizens. I am fearful that if we kick this down into another year, the momentum that I have built up with these people will be lost, because you, not you, but like the town just basically puts a Band-Aid on it and tricks people into thinking the money really exists where it actually doesn't. Okay? This is our momentum that we need for the town council to show us the leadership. Have trust in your citizenship that we can do this, and we want to do this for our children, and we want to do this for our community. And if we need other services, let us know. I had 14, no, I'm sorry, 15 moms from Rainham show up at my house on Sunday night. I'm having the momentum building Rainham, so please don't think that if you can't hear the stuff that's going on Rainham, I'm getting it rolling. It's happening. They're there tonight. Can't be in two places at once, but they're doing it. That's the kid. That's who deserves this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
I feel like 36 Magnolia Way, Christine Banky. I'm getting used to this forum of how this kind of goes. I think that a lot of everything has been said tonight. Just to recap, this district and this town is in a serious position and a serious turning point. We need to take that position seriously. I've been reached out from, I'm an activist of sorts. I like to help where I can. People know that about me. I've already been reached out to from the town, from somebody who sits on a committee to say, "Hey, let's form a Friends of So-and-so Committee to help fund things that are not being currently funded." And I would take pleasure in that. Honestly, I have a project in mind. But these things should not have to happen, where we have to have a Friends of So-and-so to fund projects around town. Things are happening around town that we can't address. Things are obviously happening in the school district that we cannot address. We're on the verge of being out of compliance for special education services. This is huge. Even yesterday, I had a friend who's saying that they're having a difficult time maintaining their IEPs and getting pushed to a 504. Taking away services, this is not fair. Kids are being, their services are being taken away because we have to make room, because we don't have enough specialists to accommodate their IEPs. It's crazy. Another friend reached out to me the other day and was talking about nursing staff and how they don't have enough funding in their nursing staff to go over the students who are potentially coming into kindergarten, to look at their records to make sure that they're vaccinated for next year. They're having issues about timing and personnel needed to do these things in a timely manner. We cannot, we're having a difficulty, difficult time just getting by with the basic level of things that we provide as a school district. So I'm standing in front of you tonight, putting faith in all of you, that you're hearing all of us as citizens in saying that we need an override. Bridgewater, like she said, the town council, the school committee is coming back at with a level budget, which is still going to be like a $7 million deficit. I'm not sure where that money comes from, and from me, and from my standpoint, I don't see it coming more from the towns. You guys have already put up the 3%. Now it's time to go for an override on the town and on behalf of the school. So I'm pushing for that.
Thank you, Christine. Anybody else, please? Mrs. Hanson.
Shannon Hanson, Pleasant Street. I'll probably get booed for this, but as a resident who's been here for 46 years, been through numerous overrides, I've seen my tax, property taxes skyrocket. We are not in a situation where I can keep affording more. Does not mean I don't care about kids. My son had a really good education at BR. He's on his way to be getting a PhD in physics. So I get it. I hated it when he was in elementary school. They lost music and art, and I was glad it came back. There's, I'd just like to see what other options can we do? I'd like to see it. What other options besides just keep going for more overrides? I'd like to see how much you're talking about. It does not mean I don't care about kids if I'm not in favor of an override, and I want people to realize that those that aren't in favor of override, not because they don't like the kids or care about the kids, I certainly do, but you have to look at it at both sides. So I would like it to be carefully considered of what an override would mean. It's not so simple. All right, we have an override now, so what happens the next time? Are we going to have an override? We have a lot of other expenses in this town that's coming up. We've got to really look at the budget and see where we can get more money. It's not a simple thing of just voting for an override. So I'm sorry if people don't like what I have to say, but I really would have to really see what's going on before I would vote for an override. It's not to say I wouldn't, but there has to be a lot more information. And I'll save my other comments for maybe at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Anybody else, please? Come on up.
I'm the short person. Hi, my name is Shannon Sheldon, 44 Magnolia Way, formerly Stanton of 67 Marl Drive. I say that only to say that I am a lifelong resident. Hi. And I'm going to flip the script a little bit. I don't have a whole bunch of stats, facts, numbers, or other data to throw at you. I could. I happen to be an educator of almost 20 years now, following in the footsteps of my mother, who was a phenomenal, legendary, iconic elementary educator in this town. And I happen to work in the number one school district in the state currently. They also happen to have the highest per-people expenditure, as was mentioned earlier, and they also have some of the highest property values. The fact of the matter is that our property values and the future of our town honestly depend on our school system. And I am here to speak more from the heart, because I have watched my town deteriorate and crumble beneath my feet, and I am saddened at what I have to offer my three children, who are all enrolled in the school system as of now. But it's devastating to drive down Broad Street and see nothing but overgrowth, graffiti, and empty buildings that were once thriving and centers of our community. I worry about the tiny poison plastic particles that are in our water. I worry about the infrastructure that can no longer support the number of residents in this town, let alone any future plans for further residential development. let alone any future plans for further residential development versus business development. We are a college town, and we used to thrive. There's no reason we shouldn't have bustling businesses that cater to not only the college students, but their visiting families. And then when they're not in session, the rest of us. I'm very, very concerned that for years, we've, as Ashley said, kicked the can down the road and worried about, and to my fellow resident, I understand the concern about raising taxes. But when was the last time we looked at our levy limits or thresholds in which we can raise taxes in a sustainable way that actually will bring us some relief from this problem? Because it seems like every year, something else is going wrong, and we're really starting to get into a hole we can't dig out of. And that worries me. Because I don't want to even be considering bringing my children to the district I work in because I can't trust the district that I live in to be fully funded. And as everyone's speaking about level funding and having a level-funded budget does not equal a level-service budget. And that is extremely problematic as well. And again, not only are we falling, you know, we are in the lowest 5% of the state. That means we are in danger of receivership, where we used to be in the top 5% when I was in school. And we need to get back to that. Absolutely, we need to get back to that. So I'm here to ask that you all propose an override. I understand that school committee needs to come to the table, but I also happen to work in the superintendent's office in Weston. And I also know that FinCom can most certainly be having some conversations with school committee and around budget and our budget manager. And I think that that needs to start happening. Because unfortunately, this is no longer sustainable or even acceptable. So, please.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Hi, Casey Rodriguez, 45 Janes Way. All right, so I'm also here to speak about the budget crisis and to correct some misperceptions around mismanagement and potential areas for saving. So I've been made aware that our out-of-district spending is being targeted as a place for potential cuts. I believe that this line of thinking represents a misunderstanding of the needs of our more vulnerable students as well as the current state of our classrooms. So our students that are placed out of district, for whatever reason, they're there because their needs cannot be met here. These placements are reviewed every year at their IEP meetings. And if success or other factors demonstrate a need for change in that placement, that change is made in accordance with the special education laws. To cut these funds in any capacity is a denial of a free and appropriate education for our neediest students. And in addition to this being misguided, I feel that it is shortsighted. Make no mistake, our special education students, or, excuse me, our special education classrooms are not in a place where we can welcome these students. We are overcrowded, short-staffed, and underfunded. We lack the training, the resources, the materials, and the bandwidth to meet the complex needs of our students who are currently learning elsewhere. To bring them back to classrooms that are not ready to receive them would only increase the challenges faced by our staff, and it would only decrease these student outcomes. And if you don't believe me, I welcome you to come see for yourself. I'm in a substantially separate classroom, and I have been out of compliance since the first day of school. I will welcome you into my classroom any day of the week. I understand that we're all searching for solutions to the problems that we face. I understand that we're trying to think creatively, but cutting special education costs is not the answer. I also emailed each of you earlier today, imploring you to fund an override that actually solves our problems rather than level sets us to this current year. I appreciate what one of my neighbors said about supporting the students but also being concerned about the implications of an override. I would like to see if we can actually show our citizens what it will cost to fix the problems. Not carry them over to next year. What will it take to fix them? I'm talking water, roads, downtown, schools, everything. I'd like to see the town and this council think progressively about how we can solve the problems and the careabouts faced by all of our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
Evening. My name's David Moore, 54 Flag Street in Bridgewater. You folks have heard a lot of serious problems tonight. And I'm gonna bring up one that's sorta related to one that was brought up earlier. For the last nine months, I've been filling in as the building inspector in West Bridgewater. And in that time period, I've gone to three seminars put on by the state on a subject called accessory dwelling units. And what these are, they're not your in-law apartments, they're not your tiny homes. This is the biggest thing that's hit Bridgewater since the acceptance of zoning in 1956. Because what it means is, many of us love the fact that we can live in a single-family neighborhood. But that's come to an end. These accessory dwelling units can be placed anywhere in town. You look next door at your neighbor's house? Yeah, maybe your neighbor could use another unit right now for an elderly parent or a child that can't afford a home or whatever. But it means that anybody can file for an accessory dwelling unit, and there isn't a damn thing the town can do about it. The state has said you will allow these accessory dwelling units. And if you wanna put in two, you can file for a special permit. The bad thing about these are, they can be sold. So you think you're in a single-family neighborhood now. You put it in, your neighbor puts one in, and then a year or two later, the elderly parent passes on. They've got this house in their backyard. They can go through the expense of removing it. Or they can say, "Hey, it's time to move on. I got no more kids living in the house. I got a unit out in the backyard." They can sell it. They can sell it as a pair, or they can condo it out. So these beautiful, single-family neighborhoods that we have today are a thing of the past. And it's worse in the center of town because in the town center, we have town sewer. These units are only restricted by environmental concerns, and they're not restricted by setback. They're restricted by sewer. If you have town sewer, there's no restriction on it. Unfortunately, water is not one of the restricting factors. And we've heard tonight that we've got a serious water problem. Well, I think, I asked the town council, through the town manager, to maybe redirect our Director of Community and Economic Development to work on the water problem and to work on how are we gonna cope with all of these additional homes? I believe we've got close to 10,000 units in town. And so that means that probably 6,000 of them have enough room in their backyard for additional homes. So this is something that we have to look at. It's a very serious problem. I hope I don't look like Chicken Little here. You can go home, Google it, accessory dwelling units. They're real, it's happening, and we're stuck with it.
Thank you, David. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
I will. Just so we all know, the adjustment handle is still here. MJ Spigot, 5 Lake Shore Center, Unit 1128. Mr. President, members of the council, residents in attendance, good evening. I wanted to just speak to the community for a brief moment, and my comments will be as quick as I possibly can be, knowing the meeting needs to do business tonight. The last few weeks, we have been under consideration in this town for candidates for a new town manager. In the last couple of weeks, we've now whittled it down to two candidates, Mr. Keith Hickey and Mr. Justin Casanova-Davis. Had an opportunity to go to the candidate's open night to meet both of them and to hear them out. Hearing the residents tonight, I believe the choice for you this evening is clear, Mr. President. I believe we need an individual who is going to be forward-thinking, able to think of solutions to problems that we currently have, and develop unique solutions to those problems and address other concerns that come up as, you know, they will inevitably come up, whether it's financial, infrastructure, socio-political, what have you. I believe it is imperative for the town council to consider a candidate who has the will and temerity to hit the ground running on day one and to build an administration that can address these problems in real time and hear the people's concerns as they arise. That is why I firmly believe Mr. Casanova-Davis is well-suited and well-prepared to address the issues the town of Bridgewater faces, both from a budgetary perspective and from an administrative perspective. I strongly encourage you, Mr. President, to ask the council to take an affirmative vote to select Mr. Justin Casanova-Davis for the next town manager for the town of Bridgewater. Thank you, Mr. President.
I got you.
Thanks. Thanks, referee.
Donna Jewell, Keith Place, Bridgewater, Mass. I'm here for a couple of reasons. One, I wanna thank the town councilors that have taken the time to talk to me over the past 30 days and spent time with me. I appreciate that. I know you're deluged with all kinds of issues, from selection of a new town manager to the water issues, to the school issues, to a potential million-dollar shortfall in our own budget. I mean, I know there's huge, huge issues. And I appreciate each and every one of you, and I know you give a lot of your personal time. I saw something today on Facebook that I wasn't aware of. It came as news to me, and I thought it was worthy sharing here today because things happen on Facebook. And I'd like you to join me in wishing Councilor Ellenberg a very happy birthday. She's sharing her day today. And spending her day today. Thank you. Her birthday as a town council.
Thank you, Donna. And happy birthday, Councilmember. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Go in once, go in twice. Well, if you're all hanging out at the end, we'll get a few more comments at the end. All right. Thank you for those who spoke tonight. All right, we are moving on to appointments. And again, tonight, we have the town manager appointment. As most of you know, we had the interview with both candidates at our last meeting. And tonight, we're bringing forward the two candidates for a vote. Again, based on having just two, we're gonna go with Robert's Rules of Order and nominate a candidate. And then we'll ask for a motion in a second for discussion. We can discuss it as a council. And, you know, we'll go forward from there. So that being said, is there a motion to make for it? Mr. Loretty?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Justin Casanova-Davis.
Okay. And a second by Ms. Strickles. Open for discussion. Would either one of you like to start? Since you made the motion, Mr. Loretty, any comments you'd like to make about the...
Yes, I think that we had two great candidates come to the table. I thank the ad hoc committee for all of their work. I know that we only had two to choose from, but I think we had two great candidates to choose from here. I think that we both, we rather all had a lot to think about over the last week. And after a lot of thought going into both candidates, it was a hard decision, but I think that Mr. Casanova-Davis would serve us very well today and into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Loretty. Ms. Strickles, begin in a second.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wholeheartedly agree with Councilor Loretty on this and all of the residents that reached out to me to the tune of 72 emails that I got in favor of Mr. Justin Casanova-Davis. That, to me, speaks volumes. It is over a span of people that agree, disagree. But at the main focus, all believe that Bridgewater is in a critical time, and we need the right candidate moving forward that will advance our town forward in not only a positive way, but an everlasting and a changing way, where we can be proud of the person that sits in that position, knowing that they are energized, ready to go, and live 15 minutes down the road. So in my opinion, it is a very clear decision, and I wholeheartedly endorse Justin Casanova-Davis for town manager.
Thank you, Ms. Strickles. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to add a few brief comments. I think that I'm certainly in agreement with my fellow councilors who have spoken in this regard. I think that as a candidate, Justin Casanova-Davis is truly exceptional. I think that the enthusiasm that he has shown, his demonstrated financial and budgetary acumen, and his engaging manner really suggests to me that he is the perfect match for this town at this time. And I thoroughly endorse his candidacy and intend to vote in favor of him.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Any other comments from any councilors? Okay. Again, I'll just add that, you know, again, we had two wonderful candidates. They both presented well. I too lean toward Mr. Casanova-Davis. Just again, for what's been already said, his energy, his financial acumen. I do think he also has connections with the State House that might help us in funding matters, especially with the needs that this town has at this point in time. And I think he certainly might provide the longevity we need in this position as well. So with that, I'll end my comments. Is there any other comments from any other councilors? One more opportunity to speak? All right, that being said, so we have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote on Mr. Casanova-Davis.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strickles?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
No.
And Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Six in favor, two opposed.
All right. Yes, Ms. Lindy?
I'll make a motion to consider unanimous from the council.
Okay, for a revote of confidence for Mr. Casanova-Davis. I'd ask for another recall vote on that.
You need a second.
I'm sorry, a second. Ms. Strickles, thank you very much. And a re-roll call vote for that.
Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strickles?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. I'll take it to the council for that vote of confidence.
Dr. Perry? I don't know if he wants to...
Oh, Mr. Lynch, I see, is on board. Mr. Lynch, any comments that you'd like to make?
Just congratulating the council on going through this process. It's never an easy process to make such an important appointment. But I think you did have some, you know, some excellent candidates. We're very pleased to have the opportunity to work with the council. And obviously, this still needs to be the matter of negotiating an employment agreement with Mr. Casanova-Davis. And we stand ready to assist the council in that effort. And again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with you and hoping that things move forward to handle the multitude of issues that Bridgewater has, like many other communities. These are challenging times for municipal governments. But again, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy, for all your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And congratulations to Mr. Casanova-Davis for gonna be, hopefully, our new town manager if we can get everything in place for him, so. All right. That being done, we do not have any hearings or license transactions this evening. We will move to presentations. And this evening, we have Mr. Rui here, our CED Director, to go over impacts of economic development here in Bridgewater. So I will turn it over to Mr. Rui, or work on getting set up for this. Success.
So I just want to maybe go through what led up to that, and then where we are today. So in 2014, the town adopted a Bridgewater Downtown Community Development Master Plan. Nothing significant happened as a result of that. In 2018, following the adoption of the 2017 Tax Cuts and Job Act by the Trump administration, the town received a designation as an opportunity zone. There was thousands of these created across the United States with the idea that it was going to spur economic development and bring in private investment. An opportunity zone is designed to attract people that have capital gains problems, or not problems, they have too much money, and invest. So if we look at, and this marketing piece is something that every community had, and so if we looked at what household incomes were, what the median home price was, but what the goals were, were to develop market rate housing in the downtown area, encourage mixed-use development, one- and two-bedroom residential, commercial, and retail. Nothing happened in the opportunity zone. Now, the only good thing about the opportunity zone, and we can attribute this to Bridgewater State University, is that they include the students and the demographics. So the opportunity zone is identified by HUD as being a low moderate-income census tract. The only part of downtown, really, is the south side of Central Square. The most of it is part of the university. So as I said, 2022, you adopted your comprehensive master plan. That was a document that had wide community input. This is kind of the underlying, and I've used this slide many times since I've been here. This is what the plan called out for. All of the things that are called out here, we've identified to be priorities that the community articulated, that they wanted to see. Resulting from that is, in that June of 2023, we initiated Vision to Reality, revitalizing the heart of Bridgewater. If you look at all of the circle, those are all elements that were called out to be priorities, goals, and objectives in the comprehensive plan. My experience in municipal government is that oftentimes, we are in silos, and we don't look at what the interconnection of all these elements are. We took a different approach because these things are all interrelated. I've spoken about these many times in the presentations I've done to you, the planning board, and the community. So just looking back to where have we come from 2018, when the opportunity zone designation came, and where we are today. Our median home prices in Bridgewater have increased 67%. And I would just say that these are not my figures, these are a combination of Census and Realtor.com, Zillow. The median income has increased 32% from $84,697 to $112,482. At the same time, our population increased 1%. I've used this slide before. I am the first to agree that you have infrastructure challenges. I've said this before to this group and others. It was the first question I asked before I even accepted the job, is to where the community was with respect to infrastructure. Shame on me for not peeling back the onion and looking farther, but these problems existed well before I got here, and I have concerns in how do we pay for some of these things. These expenses that are coming due by FY '30 have nothing to do with new development. That's just maintaining our existing infrastructure. I'm not going to get into tonight whether we have capacity, don't have capacity. We need more capacity. It's something that I've been addressing since the first week that I've been here, and we are continuing to do that. Old Colony Planning Council has undertaken a regional water study, which is ongoing. We're participating in that. We have a lot of conversations that have been talked about, the Vernon Street wells. I think there needs to be a cost-benefit and capacity evaluation about that. Those wells are in bedrock. That would require a separate treatment facility. Questionable how much capacity we can get out of those wells, whether that justifies an expense over $30 million. We, the answer for us is to engage with the Healey administration. We are doing that. We've been working on that for the past year. I can tell you that there's a meeting next week to address this with the Healey administration, but this requires many agencies of the state to come to the table at the same time. DCAM, DEP, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, the Department of Corrections, and the MBTA. We need to do, there's been talk about accessing the desalination plant that Brockton has. Again, I think there needs to be a cost-benefit and capacity evaluation. I'm not sure that, my research indicates that that plant isn't even owned by Brockton. It is owned by GS Inuma Environmental, which is a Japanese, I mean, not Japanese, I'm sorry, a Spanish company, that Aquaria runs it. So I think any conversations we're having with Brockton need to start with, do you have the authority to talk about transferring your contract or what your obligations are? And we've talked about the potential of maybe accessing water from the city of Ton. I think those conversations have to continue, but I think it's important that people realize any expansion is going to require a significant amount of state and federal funding, and quite honestly, I don't see much federal funding coming to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the next three years. I think some of the state funding is also going to be impacted by the lack of federal funding coming to Massachusetts. We are compliant right now with the MBTA community's legislation. Through that compliance, we do have access to certain funding for infrastructure, and I would hope that we would stay in compliance and pursue those funds. I think it's important to understand that the design, engineering, and construction for an expanded water and wastewater system at a minimum takes five years. So I can't wiggle my nose and fix this tomorrow. Government moves slow. I would argue that we've moved the needle more in two years and two months that has happened in the previous 15 years in the town. We've identified certain sites for redevelopment in the central business district. These are sites that we suggest are underutilized, that don't require that we're doing development outside of the downtown area. One site, the Perkins Foundry site, has been approved. There is a proposal for the Friendly site, which has not been formally submitted yet. Those two sites would, and the gallons per day, this is how much water those two sites would use. I think at your last meeting, not the water superintendent, but the DPW director indicated, we do have some challenges today, but we are not out of water today. But I think it's also important to realize that these projects aren't coming online tomorrow. The Perkins Foundry site just got their MEPA approval. There's still a public comment period. We're probably three years away from seeing that coming online. If the Friendly site goes forward, that's probably 18 to 24 months as well. So we do need to continue to work on this problem during this time period, but these projects aren't coming online tomorrow. So with respect to that, I know that people talk about why are we doing more housing? We've heard a lot of comments from people tonight with respect to schools. I think it's important for people to understand that the type of housing that's being proposed with average rents of $26,000 to $2,700 to start do not bring a lot of children to school. So this is a study from Rutgers University. You can Google similar studies throughout the country. When you look at what somebody needs to earn to be able to pay $26,000 to $2,700 a month in rent, they have to be earning in excess of $100,000. So if we look at this study, that with studios in one bedrooms, which are a percentage of what we're seeing proposed, brings 1.3 students per 100 units built. It does jump up a little bit when we talk about two bedrooms to just under nine students, but this is not the landslide of students coming into our schools based on the demographic of who would be living in the housing that is being built. And again, consistent with what was represented in the designation of the opportunity zone, that the town wanted to promote market rate housing. $26,000 to $2,700 a month is what market rate housing is. So let's just look at the Perkins Street project. This project was approved over a year ago. The benefits to this, besides the fact that there's potential revenue which will go through, the Perkins site probably could be designated as a superfund site for the amount of contamination that is there. If the town was ever left with the responsibility to have to clean that site up, we wouldn't have the money to do that. It could bankrupt the community. Edgewood Development, who's acquiring the property, has taken on the responsibility to clean that site. It's taken them a year to get through the MEPA environmental review process. Currently, that site generates $23,869 in taxes a year. So if we look at what the housing in that is, there are 46 one-bedrooms, 102 two-bedrooms, but let's look at what the estimated yearly revenue is, and this is pulled from a professionally prepared fiscal impact analysis that we required as part of this project. Property taxes, $460,000. Excise tax, $125,000. CPA surcharge, not over $9,000. Meal tax, $25,000. $619,319 a year in taxes to the community. New funds, subtract the 23 off of that, we're doing pretty good. Additional one-time revenue, building permits, $560,000 for one project. I can tell you that number exceeds what the total budget is for the Building Officials' Office today. Water and sewer connections, $780,000. The developer has offered us $200,000 in mitigation for us to spend any way that we want. So the total revenue, one time, when that project starts, is $1.5 million. People would say, well, there's going to be an impact to fire and police. Yeah, there is. Those numbers are on the left-hand side. A total of $160,244. That's 30% of the total revenue that this project would generate on an annual basis. So as we have gone through the last two years, I don't do social media. That's why I have less hair than I should have. I wouldn't have any if I did. People are like, well, you know, you're getting beat up on social media because of, you know, what you're trying to promote. All I'm trying to do in my job is what the community asked me to do when I was hired. If there's a better way to do this, I am more than happy to listen, but I hear a lot of "no," but I don't hear a lot of "but." What about this? So it gets a little bit frustrating when I hear the conversations about, you know, we need more revenue. Well, that's what we've been trying to do. I mean, we've tried to do it in a smart way. We adopted a zoning ordinance that expedited development approval at a scale that was consistent to what the community wanted to see. Some options to consider in addition to what is already on the table. I'm just putting them out there. I'm not saying I'm for them or against them, but I think that you all, I have an obligation to you in my position to put them out there. District improvement financing. The town has done this before. You did this with Elm Street to get that road put in to attract the industrial tenants that are on that. It's worked out well for the town. We could do something similar in the downtown area if we're confident we're going to support the development that's being proposed. Basically, what you're doing is you're taking the percentage of the taxes that you're getting that you weren't getting now, I always refer to this as the Butt-Four test, if you didn't do it, you wouldn't get it, investing that in public purposes. That could be roads, that could be schools. I've used this slide before, looking at the underutilized sites that we identified, being very conservative on a 20-year term and only using 70% of what the eligible revenue is, to give you an idea of what kind of income a diff could generate for the town. Opportunity zone. This, again, is a map of what the existing opportunity zone is. There's every indication that in the current administration's budget, that there'll be an extension of the opportunity zones. They expire in 2025, but the Trump administration has signaled that they are going to extend those. We've had some interest in the state-owned property at the corner of Hale and Plymouth Street from developers that would take advantage of the opportunity zone to fund that construction. The last piece I want to talk about, and I know this is going to be controversial, but I have to put it out there, is looking at establishing a commercial tax rate. If we look at those communities in the metro-south region, we have the lowest tax rate in the area. Now, some would say, well, you have a low commercial tax rate. We have nothing to show for it. That didn't attract anybody. Didn't attract anybody. I mean, by redoing the zoning, we've got developers that are interested, but I am not trying to hurt small businesses. I can tell you that new developers coming in, large developers, national developers, regional developers, this is not going to scare them away. The expedited approval process and some of the other things that we're doing can help. I think some of you remember that we're on the council when we adopted the Form-Based Code. I had suggested that at certain sites, over certain size, we give density bonuses. In exchange for that density bonus, we ask those developers to contribute to infrastructure or to public good. No one wanted to accept that. So I'm before you today, saying that there are options available to you, but if we want to address the issues that we're talking about tonight and not play whack-a-mole every year, then I think, you know, there's some decisions that have to be made, but I'm imploring people that are here as parents or teachers to understand what Vision to Reality is and to communicate to you all that they might support what we're trying to do. I agree, Broad Street is not an inviting place right now. We have 11,000-plus people at the university every day that are spending their money someplace else. We have the highest area median income in the region, and people are going someplace else to spend their money. I've heard since I got here, you know, geez, can't we just be like Easton? Well, Easton has a higher commercial rate than the residential rate is. So, I mean, they're, I'm just trying to do the job that I was hired to do. I get that people don't accept my style or may not like me, might think I'm Lucifer's son. I'm just, I'm just, I don't know another way to do it. I'm all ears if somebody has another way to do it, but I hope that next year, I'm not sitting here and we're having the same conversation. So with that, open for discussion, comments, criticism?
Thank you, Mr. Ruli.
Questions?
Yeah, so I'll open up to any council comments or questions. Does anybody have any? Mr. Loretty, go right ahead.
I know you want to talk about specific water capacity, and you did mention in the thousands of gallons per day in regards to the Perkins and then the Friendly's development. Can you give us an idea of what capacity is like in the millions of gallons per day? Because to some folks, thousands of gallons per day sounds like a huge number, but I know that for, in fact, that our capacity is closer to 2 million gallons per day. So I don't know if you could just kind of speak broadly to that?
So our withdrawal permit just increased as of March 1st to just over 1.9 million again, and then our average use is, I think, 2.2 because of water that is in the tanks. I mean, I think, as Zeus said the last time he's here, there's a margin there. I mean, we are not tapped out, no pun intended, right now, that if both of these projects went forward today, there would be adequate water. I think one of the things that we've talked about, and I think we can get funding for in the short term, is piping over from the Plymouth Street wells to the treatment plant, so that groundwater would be eliminated. There's funding available to do that. I think we're going to move in that direction because we don't have to borrow to do that. But no question, we do need to find alternative sources of water, and I laid out, you know, we are talking to everybody and anybody, but it's politics and it's government, and I get frustrated because nobody moves as fast as I do. We are, you know, I will give credit to Bridgewater State University because they've jumped in and are leveraging what their connections are in Boston to facilitate some of these conversations, but some would say we're not moving fast enough. I would say, in comparison, we've moved pretty quickly in two years, but I am not going to sugarcoat and say that I'm not worried about what our capacity is. in the short term is piping over from the Plymouth Street wells to the treatment plant so that brown water would be eliminated. There's funding available to do that. I think we're going to move in that direction because we don't have to borrow to do that. But no question, we do need to find alternative sources of water. And I laid out, you know, we are talking to everybody and anybody, but it's politics and it's government, and I get frustrated because nobody moves as fast as I do. We are, you know, I will give credit to Bridgewater State University because they've jumped in and are leveraging what their connections are in Boston to facilitate some of these conversations. But some would say we're not moving fast enough. I would say in comparison, we've moved pretty quickly in two years, but I am not going to sugarcoat and say that I'm not worried about what our capacity is.
If I could just add to that. I could just add to that on water. The work that we're doing, about to do on Wells five R and nine R that you heard about recently, will help our demand now, especially as we get into warmer weather and demand goes up. People use more in the warmer months for a variety of reasons. The work that he mentioned over on Plymouth Street, that is in survey and design right now. You've already approved the money for that work, and we would have a low-interest loan to pay for that. That work would likely happen a year from now. So those two things together will help keep us where we need to be meeting demand today. But the issue that Bob is talking about is being ready for these things coming down the road is why we're having the serious conversations with other partners to make that happen. So I don't want people to lose sight of that, and I won't, you know, make a plea to people this year. Be careful with how much water you use in the summer. It's not okay to use treated water to water your lawn. While we appreciate the revenue to sell it to you, we're more concerned about capacity in our tanks for firefighting, for emergencies, for everybody's needs. So if everybody can help us as we go through all this, that would be very much welcomed.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Ms. Loretta, another question?
Yeah, so one point of clarification, and then one more question, and then I'll stop hogging the time. So just to be clear, Wells five and nine, they, they will be upgraded and online this year, as you just stated. And the last that I calculated, looking at reports from 2023, where you're expecting about half a million gallons a day of capacity out of those wells, is that correct?
I don't have that fact on, right on the tip of my tongue.
It was point five six when I checked, but, great. And then Plymouth Street, that is also going to be coming online. We're going to be diverting that over to High Street, and we should expect that to be done next year. And that looked like another half a million gallons a day.
That, that water is available today, and we do turn, and when it gets to warm weather and we can't keep those tanks where they need to be, we will turn those wells on this year, and there will be brown water complaints this year because it'll just take that long for us to get through the design, the permitting, DEP out to bid in order to do the work for 2026. So that water is available. It's just not ideally the way we'd like to deliver it to customers.
Sure. And then, last question. Mr. Ruley, you pointed out that the Perkins project, for example, is going to bring in, I like to look at, you know, revenues, expenses, you know, running, running a business, and it's going to bring in over six hundred thousand dollars in, in revenues. We also have to take into consideration the costs. You brought up a great slide about number of children we should expect to the district. One of the residents brought up that we, we expect to spend sixteen thousand dollars, hopefully a little bit more for you guys in the future, per pupil, right? So that's, by my math, about ten students. We're looking at one hundred and sixty thousand dollars of expenses. So we're still net positive on these types of developments. And I think that that's something that we should all kind of wrap our heads around and understand, that when we do have certain developments, prioritizing one-bedroom units, this one's a little bit heavier on the two-bedroom side, but one-bedroom and two-bedroom units with our demographics in this area, we are still having a net positive on our balance sheet. We're going to be bringing in more revenues than we are going to be realizing expenditures on the school side, and then, as you also pointed out here, in the police and fire. So a question, but also just a point of clarification.
Correct.
Thank you, Ms. Loretta. Ms. McGrath, you got a question?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I have a couple. So did you get the information from Taunton Water, the quality, how the water was treated? Because Helen Gordon was talking about that in 2024.
We haven't spoken to Taunton in the last several months. I mean, our understanding is they treat their water differently than we do, but my understanding is that their water quality is, is very high. You know, again, from an engineering standpoint, if we were to reach an agreement and go back to that Taunton currently provides water to Department Corrections in Bridgewater, so they're already here. Potentially, that could be an independent loop system for that end of town until we are at a point where we could merge the two, but it would at least, you know, again, be providing water to people, and then it would also allow us to, if we were successful with that, to tie the university into that water supply.
All right. So on Elm Street, a commercial building is, I think it's been approved for twelve bays, but there's two wash bays. So how do you calculate how much water that those two wash bays will use?
I don't calculate water.
Well, I mean, you work with the planning and the water department. Do you guys talk about, okay, we just approved this?
So anytime that a application comes before the planning board, all department heads are, all departments are looped in so they can offer their input. I don't know on that particular project that the DPW or the water department weighed in at all, other than their standard answer is, we don't have enough water, so they're against everything. But, I mean, I would suggest that, I mean, I can get you an answer, but that wasn't a question that came up during the approval process. Whether it should or not, I can't answer, but I will get you an answer.
So I noticed that you have Campus Plaza still on the vision to reality.
Yep.
Have you spoken to them about, because I know McDonald's is fixing their place up?
Yeah. I mean, it's, I talk to federal realty quite often. They're in a hold period right now. They're waiting to see if we're going to be successful with the relocation of the MBTA platform. I will say that prior to November of 2024, we had a one-million-dollar earmark that had gone to the, it was the representative, it was House Representative Appropriation Committee. That's now been reduced to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for preliminary engineering with the continuing resolution that was signed last week. I don't know that we're ever going to see that. So I think right now, you know, campus federal realty is in a hold pattern. But I think it's also important to understand that that would be a phased development. You know, McDonald's upgrades their stores, their franchises, all the time. So, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't read into them making improvements in their space to indicate that things aren't going to change there.
No, I was just curious, because they were.
But at the same time, I think it's important to understand that we're challenged with the two projects that we think are going to go forward. So having a bit of a pause right now is not a bad thing, so we can catch our breath and start to look at some of these other alternatives.
Are these developers getting a tax break, like TIF?
The only approved project that we have right now is the Perkins Foundry project, and they have not asked for any kind of tax relief. In fact, they are giving us two hundred thousand dollars in mitigation, and they made a commitment that ten percent of their units would be affordable at eighty percent of area median income. They didn't need to do that. They did that on their own, but they have not asked for any kind of tax relief.
One other question. I watched your Let's Talk About the Revision to Reality, and you said there's a five-hundred-thousand earmark for a cybersecurity incubator space? Do you know what that is?
I know what it is because I wrote it, yes.
All right.
So, I mean, we had, I've talked often about the cybersecurity program at Bridgewater State University. It's one of the largest areas of employment growth in the state. We saw that as being an opportunity for businesses to come out of the university with intellectual capital. At the same time that we put in the one-million-dollar appropriation request, we put in the five-hundred-thousand dollars. Again, I think that right now, with the inaction that Congress has taken on funding, we may or may not see that. I think also that the, that was planned to go at the corner of Hale in Plymouth Street. Right now, I think the Healey administration has prioritized looking at assets like that to promote housing. So I would say that probably is off the table as terms of a location, but that's not to say that the concept is off the table.
And there was one other thing that you said. You said the MBT has additional land, and you stated MBT is working with BSU. What land does MBTA own?
The Spring Street Lot.
Okay.
And so right now, the university leases the Spring Street Lot from the MBTA. What would happen is if we were able to move the platform, there would be a land swap. So the MBTA would take the garage in the area where the platform is, or BSU would take that back, and MBTA would work with us for the Spring Street Lot. We don't anticipate the ridership to be so high that you would need that entire Spring Street Lot for parking. So we've also identified that a portion of that Spring Street Lot could be a ground lease for future development. That would generate additional revenue for the MBTA and allow us, if we solve some of our water issues, for future development.
All right. I just have two more questions. So you're planning on moving the train even though we're MBTA already qualified?
I'm sorry?
We're already with the MBTA.
So when we did the, to answer your question, I don't mean to jump ahead of you.
Go ahead.
When we did the rezoning, we made sure that we had both the current location of the MBTA platform and the proposed relocation. Both of those areas are in compliance with the MBTA community's legislation. And the last piece that I'll add on that is that Waterford Village is what we call a 40R, been designated as a 40R. The owners of that property have come forward in the last month and are looking to do additional development there that would just further support both areas being in compliance with the MBTA legislation.
Yeah, it is getting packed down there. So I was looking at the, the permits that the town has gotten for water, and on Special Condition Seven, it says seasonal limits. So I guess eight out of a Bridgewater's permitted town wells are located in a net groundwater, the sub-basin. So in August, we run low. So the-
Yeah, I can't speak to the technical aspects.
Right, but the other two ones would kick in, or should we do Vernon? Because, I mean, in August, we get straight out, because now we find, I find out that because where we built eight of our wells, it's on a sub-basin, and so that's why it goes down. And it's actually, the laws are in this permit, how we have to-
Yeah, again, I don't, I can't speak to the technical aspects of the permit. What I can say is that in conversations that we've had with environmental partners, the amount of water that we would get out of the Vernon Street wells, which would take up to seven years to construct, don't even begin to justify the expense of over thirty million dollars. Because it's coming out of bedrock, we would have to build a separate water treatment plant.
Right. So with those eight wells that are running almost dry in August, how will we support more development? When we, we're, all residents know, come August, I mean, they even force it with police-
Yeah, again, I can't, I won't speak, and I can't, to the technical piece. I think as Mrs. Robinson has said and Mr. Loretta had highlighted, we have two wells that are productive but are not functioning fully. By the spring or summer, they will be back online, and that should help some of the issues. But also, I think we have to acknowledge we've, we're in an area called mild drought right now, so that contributes. I mean, our water is coming from aquifers, so we need rain. We didn't have a lot of snow this winter. We did have rain yesterday, but that's how these wells get recharged, too. But I, I'm not even going to try to go down the path of explaining the technical pieces of what Ms. Gordon and our DPW director can speak to on the permits and the technical aspects of our wells.
No, I was just wondering.
My concern is finding alternatives to those eight wells.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Ms. McGrath. Mr. Lindy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Ruley, did I miss in the presentation someplace about traffic on Broad Street? I live at the end of the East Bridgewater, Bridgewater line in Michael's Landing, and I come down to go to Town Hall, I mean, even at ten o'clock in the morning, twelve noon, and I'm backed up to the post office right now. Is there a traffic study? Is there something that's going to tell me that it's not going to get worse with all the development?
Well, first of all, and I will answer your question. Dr. Perry asked me to do a presentation on economic impacts. We've had two recent meetings on Central Square pedestrian and traffic improvements. I think there was some consensus on some things that the town could do. I will say that both parts of that study were done with grant money that my office secured. So we are looking at traffic improvements and what impacts are. The idea of moving the MBTA platform to the Spring Street Lot is a concept called transit-oriented development, that people, that could be an intermodal transit hub, not just rail. It could be bus, it could be microtransit. We do have some existing microtransit in town now between the university and the senior center. Brockton Area Transit is looking to expand that. So the idea is, and then having development in the downtown area, that potentially people that have two cars could only have one car or no car because they have access to public transportation. But the traffic issues that we have now have nothing to do with development. Those, that's drive-through traffic. We had the Route Eighteen corridor study done by Old Colony Planning Council a year and a half ago. They are looking at Route 104 and through the entire town. There are improvements that definitely need to be made for traffic, but residential development in and of itself doesn't contribute a lot to traffic. People leave in the morning, they come back at night. I mean, it's statistically, I can show you a hundred transportation impact studies that, I mean, I think that's a red herring that all this new development is going to cause more traffic. Traffic is already an issue. I mean, every intersection on Route Eighteen in the, in the OCPC study got an F. We haven't done anything, and it was an F. So all we can do is potentially improve this. And again, if we look at, we're raising additional revenue, are there improvements we can make to our roads? Absolutely. But we don't have the money to do that now.
Sorry, I don't agree with you calling it a red herring. I think it's something that needs to be addressed.
I'm calling you what?
I don't think it's a red herring. I think it's something that needs to be addressed. I've had a million citizens that have, not a million, I've had a lot of citizens that have basically said to me, is it going to be worse? And I don't think it's going to be better.
I don't want to be argumentative, but we've had two community meetings. We've brought in a world-class group of consultants to address this issue. And, I mean, so to suggest we're ignoring it, or they didn't get the answer, I don't, they didn't come to the meeting, but if you look at the elements that we have in vision to reality, transportation, infrastructure, those are all part of it. As I said before, we don't look at things in silos. These are all interconnected. So, I mean, we are not ignoring it, but as I said, we're ignoring it now by doing nothing.
I didn't say you were ignoring it. I just said it needs to be addressed, and it needs to be part of the plan, and I didn't hear the word "traffic" in this entire presentation.
You've heard it in other presentations I've done.
I know I have, but it's, it's concerning. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Ms. Ellerberg.
Yes. Thank you. About the Vernon Street well, you say it's in bedrock. I don't know, but has it been partially developed, or what is the status of that?
I think a number of years ago, there were test wells done to see what the conditions were. When that is done, you have a certain amount of time to either put a permanent well in or you have to start the process again. That work was done and the timeline expired. So they're in bedrock, which means there's more magnesium and iron, which is more difficult to treat. Our other wells are pulling water just from the ground, from an aquifer. So you can't treat aquifer water, groundwater, the same way we treat water from bedrock. So the whole permitting process would have to start again, and again, when we look at what the potential capacity that could come from those wells, it just doesn't justify, I mean, we're looking at over thirty million dollars in today's dollars. We have to assume that that is going to increase by some margin as we go through the next seven years, if, in fact, they were permitted by DEP.
Thank you. I have a question. Would it be possible to get one of those low-interest loans that are available for towns to work on the well? And what can we get in terms of contributions, pilot money, towards developing the well?
So I want to speak to your first question. So we are up for a low-interest loan on the work to the Plymouth Street wells? I think we mentioned, Mr., the DPW director mentioned that in his, his presentation, that that money is on the DEP's list for approval. Whether those monies will be flowing in the future, because that's coming through the state, I think is somewhat dependent with what Mr. Ruley said about monies from federal to state is something where you certainly are concerned about. Pilot monies, I'm less, I think, I think are less likely, but I'll ask Mr. Ruley what he thinks.
I mean, typically, pilots are for hospitals, private universities, not state universities. And they are a payment in lieu of taxes, there is a payment. Again, I go back to that when we first talked about doing the zoning amendments, we talked about density bonuses so that we could have contributions to infrastructure, which would accomplish some of the same things that a pilot potentially could. I've done- I've done, when I did a recent meeting with the Downtown Revitalization Committee, it's very difficult to finance commercial development right now because no one is lending money on office or retail. So it is all on the back of residential. Not to bore you, but just to give you some context, some of our regional banks right now are feeling the hangover of COVID, that they've been carrying underperforming assets on their books as if they were fully performing, particularly offices. They have to write those down now. Once they have to write those down, their ability to lend money gets restricted as well. So that is forcing developers to look at private equity. Private equity has less underwriting restrictions than a typical bank, but you pay more for it. So if a commercial bank is lending you money at 7% or 7.5%, 8%, private equity is costing you 11% or 12%. To put that into some kind of scale, when using Edgewood Development, the Perkins Foundry site, when they first proposed that before I got here, based on that being almost a $50 million deal, interest rates were 3%, 3.5%. Where they are now adds $1 million of debt service every year to that project. There's not a lot of developers that can absorb that hit. So it's very difficult for developers to get projects funded, which is why we're saying if we give you more density at a reasonable scale, you'll be happy to give us some money. I think that, you know, we would be happy to relook at the zoning amendment, to add that back in. I think we have time to do that. But the projects that we have, the Perkins, as I said, is approved. We got $200,000 in mitigation that we can use there. If in fact Broad Street goes forward, they're not large enough to throw off a lot of contributions to the community. I mean, as Ms. Robinson said, we could get a low-interest loan for the Plymouth Street project. We also could get a grant. Simultaneously, that's something we're pursuing. So we don't have to borrow that money that we could pay for it a different way. So we're constantly looking at those other funding sources, so we don't have to borrow.
Thank you. One last question. You're implying that we should be raising the commercial tax rate and that we are at a very low rate in comparison to the towns that you put in this chart here. And I'm curious, what would you think would be a reasonable tax rate?
Well, fortunately, at a pay grade above me is the Finance Director. I mean, again, I'm not implying anything. I'm just giving a summary of what current conditions are. I think, you know, arguably, people would say, well, if you've got a low commercial tax rate, people would be flooding in. I mean, I'm arguing that that hasn't happened at all. So I do think I'm sensitive to it because I don't wanna have a negative impact on existing small businesses. But at the same time, when we look at projects the size of Perkins and what potentially could happen at Campus Plaza and some of these other sites, there is an opportunity to realize some greater revenue than what we would be getting now. I'm not in a position to suggest what it should be, but, you know, it's interesting when you look at, you know, you look at Dayton as an example, which apparently doesn't want any commercial development because they're at like $26 on commercial. But, you know, I think when you look at, you know, Easton and Stoughton and some of those other communities that have some characteristics such as ours, I think there's a lot of sensitivity testing we can do to look at that, and it's probably something we should look at. But I just, in my professional opinion, I just think it's something, and I know it's not for everybody, but I think I needed to put it in there for something for you to consider.
Thank you, that was very valid, the comparison, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Ruley, thank you for your presentation, and I'm pleased to see that you put before us the figures that Counselor Ellenberg just referred to, to compare the various commercial rates throughout our region. This is something that on an annual basis, the council intends with. But quite frankly, I think we've always accepted as a given the fact that the town has always adopted a resident, a factor, a tax factor of one, which is to say an equal residential and commercial rate. And I think we've never, I'll say we never had the need, but at least in fact, we have never really truly scrutinized the argument for maintaining that equal rate. Frankly, since we're looking, since we're taking nothing off the table, I think, at this point, with respect to town finances, I think that it's a discussion worth having. I realize you're not advocating for it, but I'm pleased that you brought it up again because maybe it's an elephant in the room. Maybe it's something that we have just, without giving serious thought to changing over the years, because we've always done it that way. And you make a valid point. I've often asked myself, what has it gotten us? You know, if we have such an attractive commercial tax rate, where is the commerce?
Well, I would just suggest, and, you know, to Mr. Loretty's comment earlier, leaving schools out of it for a moment, but when we look at Perkins in terms of what the impact of police and fire is, I mean, that's certainly much larger than it is for a single-family residential. So, I mean, I think there's some justification for that, that we can argue that, I think the police and fire would say, if they looked at VIVA and access, that they have a higher number of calls there than they do to a single-family house. So I think there's some justification for it. But again, that's for you all to consider.
And that's my point. I think it is something worthy of council consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chase. Anything else for any councilors?
Yes, I have one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
And I just wanted to know, in terms of advancing this situation, is it possible to have a study that, for each percentage point, how much extra income would that generate for the town?
We can do that based on, similar to what we did with the DIF calculation, anticipating what the size of these projects are. That's something that, I mean, it'll be back of the envelope, but I mean, it'll give you some reasonable scale of what we're talking about in terms of additional income.
Okay, thank you.
Just one final question, Mr. Ruley, is with the state university system getting eligible grants through the BRIDE Act that was brought up by the governor this year, and obviously the tie-ins for our water and sewer, do you think we'll have access to any of those funds to deal with our infrastructure as it ties into the university?
I don't, and Ms. Robinson and I had a conversation today on enterprise funds, how money, you know, how that goes. I mean, I think that the leverage that we have now in Boston with the university is that the Healey administration is looking to make progress in terms of promoting housing. So the Healey administration has challenged all the state universities to look at underutilized land that they may have. So currently, Bridgewater State and I think Bunker Hill Community College are the only two that have come forward or have sites that could be redeveloped. So our understanding is, is that Decam, who's the real estate agent or property manager for the state, is looking to do an RFQ, RFP for the Plymouth Hale property sometime either the second quarter or third quarter of this year. So we've used that as leverage to say, okay, you need to help us because we are not gonna be able to, with what's happening and what people's concerns in the community are, you need to help us. Decam is not the state agency that can facilitate that. That's why we have all those other agencies. That's why, you know, we've, Ms. Robinson, myself, I've talked to Lieutenant Governor on occasion. We needed to elevate this. So there is some political leverage that we have with the university. They're partnering with us to do that.
Great, wonderful, thank you. I just wanted to answer that BRIDE Act question. All right, so seeing nothing else, thank you for that presentation again. We'll move on to Town Manager's report.
Wait, there's more.
Yeah. And first up is the fire station update that I believe Mr. Ruley will be giving an update on.
Yep, so I have given you the monthly report. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer that. I can still tell you that we are maintaining our ability to stay ahead of schedule, looking for substantial completion before the end of the year. We are well within our contingency on budget. And, you know, fortunately, we bought out most of the project before we started, so we are not impacted by tariffs or any supply chain issues, which is important. But if anyone has questions or comments, I'm happy to answer those.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Ruley on fire station? Seeing none.
And I would just ask why I'm here, because I can give you the Summer Street Park update.
Yeah, yeah, we were gonna, all right, so we can jump to Summer Street Park update, so go right ahead, Bob.
So we are close to finalizing a contract for the design. That design work has to be completed by June 1st of this year. We're very comfortable that that's gonna happen. We're just moving paper back and forth between the firm and the town. Construction on that project cannot start before July 1st. That project has to be completed by the end of June 2026. So we're comfortable that we're gonna meet all those guidelines. We are, conversations with the university, they've committed some funding. Our goal is to have a public meeting in the middle of April to talk about design and get additional community input.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Mr. Ruley on that? Ms. McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. President. A resident asked me, did have any of those grants coming to where they're gonna expire?
I'm sorry?
Any of the grants that we got? Are they close to being expired, or are we gonna be able to get to use them?
Well, if you're referring to Summer Street, I mean, that's not expiring.
Oh, the grants?
Any grant that's in my office, I would never let expire without taking the money down.
Well, I'll let them know.
Good.
The other thing-
Yep.
Very good.
They, he keeps track of that, so I was, I told him I'd ask. The other question is, and I brought it up before, that driveway, that's right next to it.
That goes to the property to the rear.
Right, so are we gonna do something to make a separation so kids or anybody doesn't, drugs don't run down there?
You'll see that in the design.
So we're having a new design?
Right.
Okay. Is it the same, is it Melissa?
It's, I don't wanna get into a conversation about it in terms of where we're at, but I think everyone's gonna be pleasantly pleased in terms of, there's more there than just the landscape. We have a building there, too, that needs to be incorporated.
Yeah, I watched when Melissa was speaking about it, seemed like it was pretty good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Ruley on this? All right, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Ruley, for the update.
You fired my boss tonight.
We'll go back to the no right turn on North Street update that Council Strigles asked for.
So in checking into this, I understand that that North Street there is actually school property. It's not a town road, so it's not a place we would automatically put a stop sign. Talking with the Highway Superintendent, who also reached out to the schools on my behalf, I understand that the folks involved at the schools don't recall there being a stop sign there in the past, and they don't actually see the need to have one. They would prefer not to have one installed. So, but concern, you know, if there is concern about the traffic leaving and that being safe, we did also reach out to the Police Department, talk to Lieutenant Hennessy, and we can add some more, you know, oversight of that and keeping an eye on traffic leaving, some additional work. But it really is a school decision about whether a stop sign goes there, and their position on it right now is they would prefer not to.
Well, I think it was more that it was a right turn, it was a no right turn, not necessarily a stop sign.
I'm sorry, right, no right turn, yeah.
Apparently, there was something up at some point, and the resident said that it was no longer there. I figured it might have been an interior decision to just work the flow of traffic at some point. But he brought it up, so I just wanted to at least address it.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding, for Town Manager? Seeing none, we'll move to the final thing, a fire hydrant update requested by Council Lindy.
So the fire hydrant is the only fire hydrant in its system that is not operational right now. We had planned to do this work last year, but because of a number of other issues in the Public Works Department, we weren't able to address it. It's a little more complicated than maybe in some other locations because the plan is to move it across the street from where it is to the other side. And that requires a permit from the state to open Route 18 to be able to do the work to move it to the other side. So the plan is to address it this summer, I just don't have a specific date for you.
Any further questions, Ms. Lindy?
Further questions, I have just been trying to address it long before you were here, and I'd like to see-
I think my impression from staff is that they absolutely would have done it last year if they could have. It just became other things that came up that were more timely to be addressed.
I understand. Do you know why the move?
Nope.
Okay. I like-
Great question, I will get you an answer.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further questions on the fire hydrant? Seeing none. That's it on the agenda for the report. Any requests for the Town Manager for a follow-up meeting? Seeing none, okay. We do not have any discussion items, any committee reports that, Mr. Lindy?
We'll be addressing this later, but Budget and Finance met tonight at 6:15 and moved items forward for recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Strigles.
Thank you, Mr. President. Myself and Counsel Loretty were appointed to be on the ad hoc to address the school budgetary concerns and a potential override discussion. We have our first working meeting on Thursday at 4:30 at the Superintendent's Office, so I'm just putting it out there just because it is listed as a public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strigles. Anyone else? All right, thank you. We will now move to legislation for action. The first one up, Order OFY 25-043, CPC, Additional Funds for the Restoration of the Parthenon Freeze in the Lobby of this building. I do believe we have an update from Budget and Finance and Finance on this.
Budget and Finance met tonight and voted 3 to 0 to recommend it to the full council.
I thought you said you put this on.
Oh, not the Parthenon Freeze.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Gotcha. All right, there we go. And so this is certainly up for approval for this evening, so I'd have a motion to allot these funds for this project.
Motion to approve?
Mr. Chase.
Second.
Second by Ms. Strigles, Ms. Ellenberg. Any further discussion on it? Seeing none, I'll go for a vote. All those in favor of passing this order? Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, we have to do a vote because of our remote council.
Item was not listed because Finance didn't vote on it, so it's not on the agenda.
Gotcha, she took it off, okay, great, thank you. So roll call vote, please.
Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Next up, we have Order OFY 25-045, Acceptance of a Donation from Discovery Channel's Expedition X Circle, the Globe Production. Again, I'll turn over to Mr. Lindy for the disposition of the Budget and Finance.
So Budget and Finance met tonight and voted 3 to 0 to recommend this to the full council.
Thank you very much. And I believe Finance Committee also voted to approve.
6 to 0.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
Submissed.
Ms. Lindy, second, Ms. Strigles. Any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote for approval.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
And Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. And finally, we have Order OFY 25-047, Transfer Order for Town Manager's Office. Again, Mr. Lindy, for your disposition.
Budget and Finance met this evening and voted 3 to 0 to recommend this to the council. This is to move the funds before we were doing consultant, and we need to fund the new Town Manager and all of that.
Yep, thank you.
Just so the public's aware.
Sure, thank you. And Finance Committee voted 6 to 0 as well in favor. Do I have a motion to approve, Mr. Lindy? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ellenberg. Any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote on this particular order.
Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our legislation for action for this evening. We do not have any definitive old business or new business this evening, so we will move right into citizens' comments. Again, let me reiterate that due to Massachusetts over-meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during the public comment period. If appropriate responses to questions, the concerns will be given by the Town Manager at a future Town Council meeting. So if you'd like to come up and speak again, name and address for the record, and keep it to three minutes, and we'd love to hear from you again. So I will open it up, and if anyone would like to come up and speak. We have one coming up.
Hi, Janet Hanson, Pleasant, 665 Pleasant Street. Just timeline, the things I have. I would like to know, just everybody would probably know, and now that you have voted to approve Justin, I'm sorry, I don't pronounce his last name good. What's the timeframe to have him start? So, like, I know you said you have to go through contracts and everything, but to get some idea, what are we talking about? That would be good to know. I'm sure everybody would like to know that. As far as the train station, that keeps coming up. There was a reason why the train station was not built where, in Spring Street, and it wasn't just because it was, you know, the traffic. There was an issue, and have to look back. I was here, you know, lived here when that happened, and there was an issue as to why it wasn't there, and it's, that needs to be relooked at. I don't wanna see it moved. Traffic, it's no different in this town than any other town. If you go into East Bridgewater, you got a line of traffic. You go into West Bridgewater, from 24 or even 28, you got a line of traffic. Bridgewater, 104, 18, you know, you got a line of traffic. It's no different in any town, we're no different. But there is a survey for 104, and I've looked at it, I've done it. My husband's done it. I feel that it really should be a survey for the people who actually live on it, because it's the people that drive through it, they're making comments, but we live on it, so I, I don't wanna see that it gets wider, because then you're cutting into everybody's property. So, that was a question, and I just had a question. I've always wondered, people have private wells. Eventually, you know, I was wondering if somebody could answer, if private wells can eventually affect the water table to eventually affect the town. I'm sure it's probably private wells closer to the town wells, but there's gotta be some point where drawing from a private well can affect town. I'm just curious, maybe it doesn't, but I've never heard of a study, so that would be interesting. And the only other thing I had was on the town website. I still can't get things easily. I'm looking forward to Justin. He talked about upgrading websites he's done in the past, and I'm looking forward to that, because it sounded promising. I'm not illiterate when it comes to finding things on computers, but I still can't find. If I do a search, I'm finding everything but. I try to find documents, I try to find minutes, I try to find everything. I can't seem to find what other people seem to, so there's gotta be an easier way than having to click on this to get to that, to get to this, to get to that. So, I would like to see the website still upgraded. So, those are some of the comments I had for tonight, but it would be nice to know what a timeline is now for the new town manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Come on up, Steph.
Steph D'Amelia, Harvest Lane. I know we talked a lot about the water capacities in Bridgewater, and what we do have and what we don't have, but nobody brought up the fact that are we trying to clean the water and have a better quality of water, even though we don't, whether we have enough or we don't, but I don't think that was brought up. I wanna congratulate the new town manager. I know you guys worked hard to try to get us as many candidates as you possibly could. Unfortunately, we end up with two, through nobody's fault. I will like to go on record and say, I truly believe Paradigm did not do a good job. No fault of the ad hoc committee, but I just don't think they did a good job. I am happy with the candidates that we did end up with. I didn't understand, Mr. Ruli kinda took off and wasn't here for our comments, but he mentioned something about Brockton wanting to bring their Bat Bus business here to Bridgewater. I don't understand why. There's not a real, there's not a lot of things to do here for people coming from Brockton, and I'm, I'm not sure how many people from Bridgewater want to go to Brockton when they can just jump on the T or take their own car. He also mentioned that if the development in the downtown area comes and the T station is moved, then people don't need cars, because they're gonna leave early in the morning and come back at night. What good is that for the town of Bridgewater as far as small businesses? If they're gonna leave and not come back, just to come back, shower up, go to bed, eat dinner, and go to bed? Doesn't make sense to me. Somebody had mentioned earlier, I don't know when, and I did hear it earlier in the, in the week, is there any truth to the matter of $1 million shortfall? I don't know if that's true or not, it's kind of a scary thought, which brings me to think of, God rest his soul, Mr. Kravitz had mentioned, a forensic audit, is that something that you guys would entertain? As far as the meeting minutes go, I know this young lady has to do the work and get it out every week, and I noticed there were some mistakes, but do you guys all get the opportunity to review them before they become public? I don't know if that's a thing or not, but I, I belong to a small organization where I'm on a board of directors of 13, and we each get a copy of the meeting minutes from the week before, and then from the month before, and when we come forward, we've already seen them, we've already gone through them, and it's really quick to accept them. And somebody had mentioned personal wells. Has anybody looked into the possibility, and I don't know if this is a possibility or not, but some people do have wells at their home in Bridgewater, and to get them offline, maybe some kind of incentive with a water filter system or something? That's it, that's all I got.
Thank you, Stephanie.
And thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else, please, come on up.
Ashley Mallard, Grange Park. I didn't get to offer my thanks to the committee for the opportunity to do the meet and greet with the town managers, because that was really insightful. I was so moved by my student earlier that I had forgot to mention that, and I do appreciate your choice and support, Mr. Casanova Davis. I did think he brought a lot of enthusiasm and some interesting perspectives on what to bring to our community. One thing I know I've done in the last two weeks is met, I went to the State House and met with Senator Driscoll and had a conversation about a variety of different legislative actions that we could be looking at statewide for supporting schools. There will be discussions about Chapter 70, but don't get misled that that's gonna be a drop in the bucket, if it even really comes. And I know with the history of transportation, although they're in the 90, 90% reimbursement right now, I sort of fear they might do a little, okay, we drop back down on transportation and then go back up on Chapter 70. So, you gotta wager, let's take a look at Chapter 70, Chapter 71, it's not going to be enough to help us. Last thing I wanna bring up, and I've mentioned this online, is the Bright Act, and I really encourage you to support the Governor's Movement on the Bright Act, because it's supposed to funnel money to BSU for infrastructure. And this would be an interesting way to see if we can use that infrastructure to improve the source of water that BSU uses. And I do have a little hesitancy, as I'm reading more up on this, of if we tip too much of Bridgewater, BSU off of our water source, who is the highest tier in payers, that that money would therefore then be put onto the residents, and that is just not necessarily, like, we need to really have a study on what direction to go with. But I, I was a little happy with some of the stuff I heard Mr. Ruli say today in regards to a little bit better water plan in place. That plan really wasn't presented last time, so it wasn't as clear as to when some of these changes were going to be coming about. And I also appreciated the concept of a change and a shift of taxes, but it would be wonderful if someone could explain how that shift works, because I have a friend who's a selectman in another town, and he did say that like an 8% shift would be like a ridiculously low change for the income of the resident, like $40 savings or something. So, like, you need to really run the studies on that, because then it's like, are you doing? And so, I don't know the exact answer, but can you do a raise on just one versus both? So, those are things that, as we bring this up, and his numbers were wrong, by the way. We are not at 12 something per residency, it's 1183, so we're even worse than that. So, it, it needs to happen, but we wanna make sure we do it in a very fiscally responsible way and not trick the community to thinking that they can leverage everything off of the little, little commercial we have when we're actually probably not getting, getting a significant savings. So, I'd like to see those numbers, and I'd love to see them from the school, too, but charts, please.
Thank you, Ashley. Anybody else? MJ, come on up.
Gotta keep it up. MJ Spigot, 5 Lake Shore Center, Unit 1128. Mr. President, members of the council, I get up just, you know, this last time this evening. First, to thank you for taking that affirmative vote for the candidate for town manager. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I look forward to the new town manager and his administration, and look forward to working with him. However, I can be of assistance as Chair of the Finance Committee and in any other capacity as a town resident. I certainly encourage residents in town to continue to be active and also reaching out to the new town manager when he does come on. That way, he is fully aware of any issues and concerns that are going on in the community or new things that may arise that he may not be privy to just yet. So, on that regard, I look forward to seeing how that all plays out. The other thing I, I heard mentioned from one of the residents was a really good question about doing an audit. I can speak to a little bit of that, as a person who is in municipal finance myself. A forensic audit is usually typically done if something has been so egregiously done badly from a financial or a municipal finance perspective. I believe our current auditor is Rosalia Clark Associates. They do work with many other towns and cities in Massachusetts. You could always ask them to do another individual independent audit. I suspect that they won't find necessarily an issue. If there is any type of budgetary shortfall, it is only because this town has not necessarily fully budgeted its needs in that capacity. Typically, a shortfall only happens because of either increases that are contractual or you have some other sort of capital issue that may have arisen, maybe, maybe a one-time repair or some sort of emergency replacement of a capital asset. So, for that purpose, a forensic audit would not necessarily be necessary, although it is something to consider if you wanna have Rosalia and Clark do a secondary audit from what you've already had done as part of Mass General Audit, be required as an annual audit at the end of a fiscal year. As it relates to the tax rate, that is something that you should have a fulsome conversation on. I know, speaking with the previous Finance Director, Mr. Solomati, basically, he said we didn't necessarily have enough of a commercial base to have two separate tax rates. But that being said, though, taking a look at the, the equivalence that we have in some of our friendly neighbor municipalities, I would certainly say, right now, just, just for a start, look at possibly the range of at least $13 on 1,000 up to $16 on 1,000. Start low, work your way up. I know the highest on that list was the town of Avon. They're a town of 5,000 people. I used to work for them for five years, they had a budget of $20 million. They got a lot of money out of the larger businesses, they didn't necessarily get a lot out of the small businesses. But their tax rate was more or less leaning towards the taxpayers themselves, not necessarily businesses. They were very friendly to small business. So, if small businesses in a town of 5,000 can handle a percent rate of $27.84 on 1,000, we can certainly start with a smaller amount and potentially work our way up and see how it works out. Certainly, we do need more data, we do need more study on it, but that is certainly something to consider from a long-term perspective. So, with that said, Mr. President, I will yield back any balance of my time.
You're right on the nose. Thank you, MJ.
Time as always.
Anybody else like to come up and speak? Going once, going twice. Alright, thank you to all those that came up to speak tonight, both in the beginning of the meeting, at the end, and again, your presence is always welcome. We will move to council comments. I will start with Ms. McGrath to my left.
I don't have anything to say, thank you.
Alright, Ms. McGrath. Ms. Strickles?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have my second scheduled office hours this Saturday at the Juice Mill from 9:30 to 11:00. Please come, support local small business, and voice your concerns. It will be the second that I've done this month, and I am looking at April dates as well, so as things continue to evolve, I hope to schedule two a month from here on out. And I want to also extend a happy birthday to Councilor Ellenberg, and I hope that this year is wonderful for you and that you felt celebrated today. And I also want to extend congratulations to our, hopefully, new town manager, Justin Casanova Davis, and just commit to being able to work with him in a cohesive and a collaborative way to really focus and hone in on the issues, the real issues that we have in town, because they're robust and they are long-term fixes. So, they're not, it's not going to be something we can necessarily put a Band-Aid on any longer. We need to rip the Band-Aid off and kind of create some healing here. So, I'm really excited about his energy and his commitment to the process, and just excited to see what we can do as far as the town is concerned.
Thank you, Ms. Strickles. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would also just like to express my enthusiasm for what we hope to be our new town manager. And certainly, we've, we've taken all the, all the right steps, we've done all the hard work. I think that thanks are owed to so many people in the community who have put input into that process, and it's been, as you all well know, a multi-month-long ordeal. It's gotten us to this point. I think it's a very important benchmark that we've just reached. I think it's promising. I'm very confident that we can come to an agreement with the candidate, and that's what we're gonna be attending, we're going to be attending to directly. But I'm very happy that we've done that. I'm, I'm happy and thankful for all the members of council, all the members of the ad hoc committee, and everyone who's devoted their time and attention to this. It's, there's nothing really more critical for our town right now than resolution on the appointment of a new town manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Ms. Lindy?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. President. I do wanna also wish my fellow councillor a happy birthday, and as much as I like public service, this would be the absolute last place that I would ever wanna be on my birthday. So, congratulations for being here. I didn't go on a vacation this week, because I did not wanna be on Zoom, I wanted to be present. I did wanna just explain my vote of earlier. I don't have anything against Mr. Casanova Davis. I just felt the other candidate had more experience and managed a town the size of Bridgewater, and that's one of the things that I was looking for. Also, I will take exception to Mr. Ruli. I know he's not here, because he was gone the minute his stuff was over. I do think it's gonna have a traffic impact, and living in that neighborhood and being the district councillor for that area, I would like to know more information. Lastly, I wanna thank all the residents that have been part of this process, all the people that showed up at the meet and greet, all the people that have spoken to us, all the, I didn't keep track of it as closely as my fellow councillor Strickles about how many emails and texts and phone calls and stuff I got, but it was quite a bit for a part-time job that's unpaid. Lastly, I do wanna say something, and it will be interpreted as negative, and I'm trying not to make it personal, but at the joint budget and, the joint budget meeting with the School Committee Budget Subcommittee, where all of us were in attendance, and I brought up an idea. I brought up an idea to form an ad hoc committee comprising of Bridgewater councillors, the, the town manager, the budget director, I thought would be the Budget and Finance Chair and the Finance Committee Chair, the reigning Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, the Financial Director from there, the Finance Committee Chair, the BR Schools, the Chair, the Vice Chair, or the Budget Subcommittee Chair, the Superintendent of Schools, and the School Budget Director. And I am upset, saddened, and troubled that I wasn't allowed to provide my expertise to that, Mr. President. Thank you.
Is Mr. Murphy on the line? You have any comments, Mr. Murphy?
I have a question for Council Lindy. Was that directed at me, your comment about Zoom?
No, not at all. It was, I don't like participating on Zoom, I'm sick of it. I taught for two years on it, and I didn't think I could be recognized easily enough had I gone on a trip.
Thank you. I'm actually on a work trip for my full-time job this week, so I'm sorry to the rest of the council, I couldn't be there this evening, but I am happy that our candidate passed. I think we have a great candidate. I think the process really played out well, and I hope citizens feel like they were involved in the process. I know we took steps along the way to incorporate feedback, make sure people felt like they were heard, but ultimately, I feel like the best choice was made for the town of Bridgewater, and hopefully, Mr. Casanova Davis can help us move forward and, and put the town back on a good track, especially financially as we move forward. That's my own comment tonight, but thank you all.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Council Ellenberg?
Yes, I wanted to say congratulations to the new town manager, and I look forward to working with him in a constructive way for our finances. And lastly, I just say, we need to seriously study these tax rates and what would be the actual dollar amounts that would redound for each extra dollar of tax rate. And I just wanna think.
that would redound for each extra dollar of tax rate. And I just want to think that, I think that this might help our schools in the long run rather than override after override after override situations. So that's something we need to seriously address. Anyway, thank you for everyone for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Ms. Loretty?
I'd also like to congratulate Justin on his appointment, and hopefully, we'll be able to come to an agreement, and he'll be our new town manager. I'd like to thank all the residents for their input. I formed some great relationships in this process, talking with a lot of you individually, so I thank you for reaching out, and I thank you for your input and your conversations. I also want to thank the, the parents and concerned citizens that come and speak out in regards to the schools. We hear your concerns. I'm looking forward to working with Councilor Strigles on our ad hoc committee. I'm also looking forward to working with this council on a long-term sustainable plan over the next ideally five years about how we're going to approach our budget and finances for not only the schools, but also our infrastructure, and look at everything cohesively as, as a long-term and, you know, broad, broad project. And I'll, last comment, all due respect to Mr. Moore, but I did want to make a point about ADUs because we did just have this on the budget back in January. They cannot be sold individually. That is incorrect, as I read it in, in our, in our zoning. Water and sewer capacity must also be considered and met when designing and building these ADUs, and you can only build one per lot. So that is in our zoning, and I just wanted to make that clear before they believe that their neighbors is going to drop a tiny house in their backyard with no consideration and, and no permits or anything like that.
Thank you, Ms. Loretty. And just in closing, to echo all the other sentiments, I welcome, hopefully, we can get Mr. Casanova Davis on board as soon as possible. As far as timeframe goes, again, it depends on negotiations and all of that, but hopefully, I would say sometime in May, no later than hopefully June 1st. I thought the process went as well as it could go. We tried to make it as transparent as possible. We got as much public input as we can in the process, and in the end, I think we ended up with a great candidate that hopefully will lead us going forward for many years. I will be taping my State of the Town address this Thursday morning with the town manager, which will be aired on BTV shortly thereafter. So I'll keep a lot of my extra comments for the report that the, I'm generating. And I also want to, once again, offer a happy birthday to Ms. Ellenberg.
Thank you.
You're welcome. With that, we do have to go to executive session tonight. So I will entertain a motion to move into executive session under executive session, I'm sorry, I'll repeat it again, under MGL, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, but I do have a question. Can we have a brief break in between?
Certainly, because we're going to let the car clear on out. So yeah.
A second.
And do I have a second? A second, Ms. Loretty. I need a roll call vote for that, please.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
And Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
All right. We'll take a brief break, and we'll go under executive session shortly. No, we can stay right here.